Looks like we have a, a, a majority on the, uh, we have a, we have a quorum and I don't see Nancy, but she sometimes has a little problems. Nancy, are you, are you in yet? I don't see her anywhere.
I don't see her in the participants list. Okay, we're gonna do a roll call.
Okay, hold on, let me start the meeting. I'll start the meeting. I'll, I have to start the meeting first.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, minor detail. Alright, so I'll go ahead and, and start the planning commission, uh, meeting for, what's today? The twenty fifth?
Twenty sixth.
Twenty sixth, October twenty sixth. Roll call, please.
Uh, Chair Lynn.
Here.
Uh, Commissioner Lerner. Commissioner Naransik, am I pronouncing that right?
Yes, thank you here.
Uh, Commissioner Konsi, am I pronouncing that right?
Almost.
I can't hear you.
Yeah. Gabby, you're on, you might be on mute on your computer, on your phone.
Excuse me, yes, I'm here, thank you. Sorry about that.
That's right.
Commissioner Lam.
Here.
Alright, very good. So, uh, with that, we'll go ahead and start with the, with the, uh, minutes from the last meeting. Hey, I didn't see anything on that.
I was fine, I'm fine with it, happy to make a motion. Yep, we accept.
Need a second?
Second.
Alright, moved and seconded. Please seconded. Alright, uh, have a roll call, please. When we do the, when we do the Zoom meeting, uh, we go ahead and read out the, the names on, yes, roll call.
Chair Lynn.
Yes.
Commissioner Lerner. Commissioner Naransik. I can't hear you.
Perry, are you, are you, are you back on yet?
I see him.
Alright, Perry, you, are you, are you, how'd you vote on that?
Uh, yes, yes.
For the minutes, okay. Uh, Commissioner Konsi?
Yes.
Commissioner Lam?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, good. Now I'll go ahead and, uh, there's a public comment section that, uh, we have every meeting and that's for meetings of our items not on this agenda, and that's to make sure that we, uh, hear about things that we might need an update on or new, new items that we want to look into, or just an update in general from the community. So I'll go ahead and open up the public comment section. If anyone's here to speak on something other than what's on the agenda, you can go ahead and, and, uh, come forward now. Nobody's running to the, uh, to the podium, so, and I don't see anybody raising their hand online, so I'll go ahead and, uh, close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for the next items. Alright, the next item, I'm gonna take my, oh man, you can actually see without the sunglasses on. Alright. Alright, then the next, the next items are the public, uh, are the, uh, it doesn't even have a label on it. Okay, are the, are the items that we're gonna be going over tonight, there's, uh, items four A, four B, and I understand four C might need a continuance, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so for those, what, what the, what's going on is that the, uh, uh, the staff is, is still working through, uh, considerations with the applicant and the applicant and staff have agreed to continue this item until the next meeting. So, th- that's a good enough update, I think, right?
Yeah.
Alright. Alright, was there anything else you were gonna add?
Uh, we do have to discuss when our next, um, planning commission meeting date is.
Well, we'll, we'll continue to the next meeting and we'll talk about the next, what, what the next meeting later. For those of you, there's a conflict with this room. Uh, we've, we've been on the schedule for a year, but all of a sudden, several, uh, the meetings are coinciding on the same location on December seventh. So we may be talking about a December fourth, meet, fourteenth meeting for us, because of the, because of the, uh, housing plan, the, the, uh, the, the town council is gonna be meeting on the seventh, and then there's also a park and rec.
Kraken Park.
Yarkin Park meeting, that's, uh, was somehow put on the same time, so, uh, w- we'll talk at the end of this meeting of what, whether the fourteenth works for us. Right now, let's continue this to the next, let's go to, uh, I'll go ahead and move the, uh, item four C, uh, four C, the move to, uh, our next meeting, which, uh, will probably be on December fourteenth.
Yeah, if everybody has a call on that date, okay.
I, I made motion to have a second.
Second.
Randy, seconds.
Sure.
Uh, roll, roll call, please.
Uh, Chair Lynn.
Yes.
Commissioner Lerner.
Alright, she's not here.
She's not, she's not on.
Is she there? Oh, there she is. Nancy, Nancy, you're on mute. But we're gonna skip you on this item because you didn't hear the update. It's just a continuation, a continuance on item C, uh, for next time. Alright, go ahead and you'll go through the names.
Okay, uh, should I start on top, from the top?
No, just go ahead and you'll go to Perry.
Uh, Chair Naransik?
Yes.
Chair Naransik, sorry?
Yes.
Okay, now I've got my mute off, thank you.
Alright.
Uh, Commissioner Konsi?
Yes.
Commissioner Lam?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes.
Alright, great. I'll go ahead, I'll go ahead and let everybody know that I'm really here. Alright, so.
Eric, put it back on.
It's scary, it's scarier.
Very good.
We'll go ahead and go with item four B, you know, that, uh, I definitely got, I got a new trim. Alright, uh, item four B, the tree protection zone exemption for eighty-four Stockbridge Avenue in Atherton. Uh, we'll go ahead, just to make sure everybody understands the process that we'll be using on, on both of these items. Well, every item will open up with an overview from staff, then we'll go ahead and have questions from the commissioners to staff. Then we'll open up the public comment section and we'll go ahead and start with the applicant or the applicant's representative. Then we'll hear from anyone else who might wanna be speaking on the item, and then we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion and action as appropriate. Alright, then if anyone comes in later, either online or, uh, in the room, then I'll go ahead and go through the instructions again, so everybody's on the same page about the process. Alright, with that, we'll go ahead with an, with a staff update.
Uh, Chair Lynn?
Yes.
Uh, just for clarification, were we doing?
Item four.
Stockbridge first, or fifty-one ferrocks?
We're doing, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I dropped the wrong one. Uh, here, good, good question, heritage. This is for heritage tree removal permit on four A, fifty-one ferrocks, and fifty-one ferrocks, thank you for asking. Alright, I was switching glasses at that moment. Thank, thanks a lot. Alright, item four A, for those of you, fifty-one, uh, uh, fifty-one fair oaks, we'll go ahead with this, uh, staff update.
I'm gonna share screen for those online. Uh, fifty-one Fair Oak Circle is requesting, the applicants are requesting, for a heritage tree removal permit of one twenty-one, twenty-one inch ginkgo tree, uh, the, the current parcel is seventeen thousand zero twenty-nine square feet. It is located in R one B zone. It is surrounded by low-density, single-family homes. The proposal on this parcel right now is for a three hundred and eighty-seven square feet ADU proposal. As you can see in the map in front of you, the ginkgo tree is circled in red, that's the site plan. It is in the corner of the, a cul-de-sac with the entrance in the curved portion as we can view it. The, while we were, uh, the, this map shows what is shown in hatch is the new, ADU proposal that the applicant is, uh, currently, you know, wanting to pursue. The existing main house and the pool and the deck and the garage is shown in front of you. The, during this, uh, discussion for the heritage tree removal proposal that we have received, uh, from the applicant along with the Arbrist report. The town Arbrist and staff have had detailed discussion of several proposed alternatives for this ADU with the applicant and owner. And what the staff report shows today, and this is an aerial view of the alternatives that were discussed, labeled as A, B, C, and D, and there is another plan that has clarity on what this is. As you can see, the, the, the staff worked with, uh, went back and forth several times with the applicant, requesting them to try and relocate this ADU proposal at different spots. And we have, uh, we have received, uh, response memo from them as to location number, the current location being the highest and best use at this point.
Nancy, Nancy, you're off mute, so you're coming through, everybody. Go ahead, continue.
Alternative location A, as you see in the pictures over here, has, is very, um, i- i- is, is very dense and it has two large palm trees. We, uh, staff visited the site along with, uh, on a separate occasion along with the Arbrist, and this is what it looks like. Ideally, um, the town Arbrist cannot support location A for the ADU because of the TPZ zones in here, so this is not a good alternative. Alternative B was the one just outside of the living space of the main house closer to the pool. Uh, there is a requirement of the ADU to maintain at least eight feet from accessory structures, and so staff, uh, has reviewed this alternative and we, 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 we can tell you that this is not a feasible alternative because it doesn't meet the minimum standards. So, alternative B is out of the question. Alternative C was something that we, we as staff pursued, that we were talking with the applicant about, um, how this could be a spot for the ADU proposal that doesn't have, uh, any impact on any large heritage trees. But, uh, the applicant would like to retain, uh, this, uh, patio and enjoy the, the view as such. What you see in the image here is quite different from what we see, we saw at site. It's fairly very lush and green and the foliage is pretty dense around this deck, and it does provide direct, uh, access to the main living space of the home and the, um, the, just across the kitchen and outdoor, uh, step out to that space. Um, so the reason, uh, for the request for the infeasibility is that the owner would like to retain, uh, and enjoy the, the deck as, as it is, um, as, as his own, uh, home a- and as, as it's built currently. It also is a space that might cut off a lot of light into the kitchen, and that is something that the applicant doesn't favor at this point. Alternative location D was another location that was proposed by staff. But it does, uh, it, it is, it does sit in the front setback area, so we, we theoretically cannot, I mean, we, we cannot approve an ADU in the front setback, so that's, uh, that's another alternative that can't be supported by staff for the ADU, although it doesn't have impact on trees. So we come down to the exact location that it is right now, where the proposed location of the ADU is right behind the garage. Yet there is a little bit of access into the main home as such. The garage, uh, being in this location, it has no privacy impact to the existing home because there are no windows to the garage. And, uh, the only impact here is that of this tree. This picture shows the tree during winter, but it is currently in this state, so it is a, a tree that's not in, in, as, in this shape as is shown in the, from the applicant's side, but every single discussion that I'm sharing with the commission to, tonight is being discussed thoroughly with the town Arbrist. And the town Arbrist has provided a memo and she has recommended that, uh, based on her analysis and the applicant's, uh, Arbrist analysis, that she would recommend approval of this heritage removal tree, and we have her on the call. We have the applicants on the call for, to, to answer any questions, and this ends, uh, my presentation for fifty-one fair oaks.
Alright, Sally, do you have anything to add to that?
Um, no, I think the applicant did a good job of exploring the different locations and, um, what I can say about the tree is that it has been topped and, um, what, cut way back. Um, and also, it is pretty close to the house currently, so it could cause conflicts in the future. Um, it's only a few feet away from the current garage, so.
Alright.
Um, it would cause some conflicts, um, and I'm assuming that the, the the new owner didn't prune the tree like that, so.
Yeah, it was the previous owners, uh, that, that did that.
But we'll, we'll open up the public hearing in a minute, so, uh, this is just the, just the staff and the, uh, and the, and the, uh, commission.
Yeah, so that, those are all the comments I would have on that. I originally, at my, at staff level, denied the tree because it's not, I didn't feel it was dead or dangerous, but after exploring all the locations and then, um, considering that it's close to the house and would cause conflicts. Um, it's something I can recommend now.
Okay, great. Yeah. Alright, any questions of staff?
Yeah, I do, this is Randy. So, so, so Sally, I, I don't ever remember ginkgos be- being heritage trees.
Um, so, uh, it is over fifteen inches diameter, so it is considered a heritage tree.
So it's not the species, it's the size.
It's the size, and, and we had them, um, show that it's not in the built area, because if it was located in the main house buildable area, it, it would, could be removed without a permit, but it's right outside that area, so.
Okay, I understand now. Okay, I, I have a bunch of comments, but I'll wait, Eric, till afterwards, I've.
Yeah.
I commend staff for coming up with a bunch of alternatives, but, yeah, we'll talk later.
Alright, great. Then, well, well, with, any other, any other questions of staff before I open up public hearing?
Uh, not for me, thank you.
Alright, great. Alright, we'll go ahead, so, uh, thematically correct, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Let's, let's, let's hear from the applicant or the representative first.
I think we have both, yeah.
Sure, um, yeah, I can go first, my, just a quick intro, my name is Shiraam, I, I'm the property owner of fifty-one Fair Oaks. I'll just make a few comments and then I'll hand it over to, uh, the design team at Open Remodel, uh, to talk about, uh, technical aspects. So first off, thank you, uh, to the staff, especially Rada and Sally, uh, for taking the time to, to work on, uh, you know, on this proposal. Uh, so we bought this property, uh, earlier this year, um, and, uh, you know, we love the neighborhood, it's a fantastic, uh, property. Uh, we really like the, the foliage and the vegetation, which is one of the key reasons we bought this, uh, property. Our daughter really likes the park-like setting. Uh, we actually plan to improve it by, by adding more trees, uh, as I was telling Rada, uh, the other week, uh, when she visited, uh, the, the property. Uh, so we are planning to, to build and attach the ADU as was presented in the plan, um, and, and we are requesting removal of this one, uh, ginkgo tree. Uh, you know, my take is that, you know, this proposed location, um, you know, is the least disruptive to, 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 you know, the rest of the vegetation on the lot and does preserve the overall character of the property, which, if you see it in person, is, is just fantastic. It's, it's a very forested, uh, you know, like, uh, setting which we absolutely love and would like to preserve. Um, so there's a large redwood tree, you know, three mature palm trees, uh, you know, lots of fruit trees, flowering plants, and other dense vegetation, um, which we would like to preserve. So, um, so yeah, uh, that's, that's basically, you know, just a quick summary. Would like to turn it over to the, the design team and Open Remodel to talk about any technical aspects, you know, about the, the ADU and, uh, you know, and any, uh, plans there. Thank you.
Yeah, the only, the only thing, unless, unless commissioners need it, this is really about the tree, so we don't need an update on the, on the ADU or anything, because that's already, that's already approved. So, if, if, uh, if your representative has any, any information on the tree, then, then that's, that's all we need to know about on this meeting.
Yep, agree.
Anything else?
Yeah, hey, this is Ashadosh, uh, I'm from the design team, and, uh, yeah, we had, we explored all the possible locations and, uh, this was the least deceptive one, and that's why we chose that, so I think Shiraam has covered, uh, for the most part of it, yeah.
Alright, very good. Alright, any other, any, anyone to speak on this item, on the applicant? Then I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion and action as appropriate. Randy, did you want to start?
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I actually, yeah, the, I, I, ha- having owned two ginkgo trees, I had no idea. After the thousand years we spent on the, on going through the, the, the trees and what, what a heritage tree was, I'm shocked that that made the list, but I understand now with the size. I'm sorry staff had to spend that much time on alternatives. Uh, it, my, in my view, this is a no-brainer, we approve it, get it out of there. I think their ADU is a great spot. I hate the fact that staff spent so much time figuring out the alternative locations. Um, and, and that amount of time that probably took, and I'm, and the, the time for the applicant. Um, your site looks beautiful and I, I commend you on it and adding trees, but also on adding the ADU, which is something we all really need, as we all know. So, from my standpoint, this is absolute no-brainer.
Alright. Anyone else have a comment?
I agree with Randy, I'm Nancy Lerner.
Alright, alright, Perry, Perry, Perry or Gabby?
No, no questions, thank you.
Yep. Yeah, I visited the site and the only, the only discrepancy I saw was the packet had a dead, totally dead tree, and I saw a very green tree in that spot, so, uh, but it's way too close to the house. It's the wrong, the wrong tree in the wrong spot, so I don't have any problem with this. Alright, anything, anyone else, before I, uh, ask for motion? Alright, let's go ahead and, uh, need a motion. Perry, you got a motion on this one, or?
Sure, um, I move that the planning commission find their quest for a heritage tree removal for one twenty-one inch ginkgo tree is not contrary to the purpose and intent of the general plan for the reasons outlined in the staff report, and the planning commission approved the heritage tree removal permit at fifty-one Fair Oaks Drive.
Second.
Well, motion of second.
Third.
Nancy thirds. Roll call, please.
Chair Lynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Lerner?
Yes.
Commissioner Naransik?
Yes.
Commissioner Konsi?
Gabby, you're, yeah, you made.
I think I don't see her.
I don't see her either, she fell off.
Commissioner Lam?
Yes.
This motion passes.
Alright, very good. Uh, I note that Gabby, I dropped off on, on this one, alright, so it's in the minutes, alright?
So we'll have to make that note in the minute.
Yes.
Yeah.
I just wanna make sure that there's a reason why she didn't vote. Um, item four B, uh, so thank you for, for those of you who are, were there, thank you for, thank you for setting it up and thank you for working hard on putting it in the right spot.
Thank you so much.
Good luck, good luck on the site. Item four B, the tree protection zone of eighty-four Stockbridge Avenue, and we'll go with the same process on this, we'll go with a, uh, uh, staff overview, and, uh, then we'll come back to, uh, open the public hearing.
Sure, thank you Chair, I'm gonna find a screen to share. Uh, what we are viewing is the eighty-four Stockbridge, uh, site plan, and I'm going to, uh, slowly zoom in into the exact TPZ zone for the trees. Um, the, this project has, has proposed a detached accessory garage that needs to maintain the required eight-foot, uh, distance from the main house. The, the location of this garage, as you can see with tree number one and two, is, you know, is peculiar for its spot and the way it's located is, it, it's actually at the site when you go into eighty-four Stockbridge, they have, they have started the foundation closer to the main structure at five feet separation, but they need to actually move it out closer to the neighboring property line, uh, to keep the eight-foot distance, uh, required by the ordinance. This, basically, what this does is it impacts tree number three and tree number four's TPZ exception. Tree number four's, uh, TPZ exception is currently at six point zero eight. And tree number, tree number three, uh, requires the, uh, the TPZ to be at seven point uh, three X. So, this is beyond a town Arbrist's staff level approval for TPZ exceptions. And the planning commission, this tree number three and four are neighboring redwood trees, uh, and we have a letter from the neighbors of, for, for this TPZ exception authorization, and the town Arbrist and I, we went and visited the site at separate occasions and um, the staff report has a picture of the, and, and the, the staff report and the, uh, supplementary documents have pictures of this, the tree with just very minimal main roots, and town Arbrist can talk more about it. As you can see, this is the required TPZ exception that they need to move the garage in order for us to approve this accessory structure. And based on what we're seeing on site, based on the requirements of the ordinance to maintain the distance, staff is recommending approval of the TPZ exception, and, uh, Sally, uh, our town Arbrist can speak more if she has any other input outside of this, and this concludes my presentation for eighty-four Stockbridge.
Thank you. Sally, anything, anything you wanna add?
Nope.
Um, I did wanna add, um, if, would it push the?
No, I'll.
Hear me? Okay, if you, if they wanna push the structure further towards the oak tree, um, that was, uh, not gonna be as good of a solution because that oak tree is in, um, pretty poor shape.
Really poor shape, both of them, but one of them, one of the two oak trees is being removed, correct, the back one?
Yeah, so I did, so it's, it's best that they're not moving it closer that way.
Hmm, yeah.
Because they only found about one, uh, two-inch root and no, than that, and because the neighbor is in favor. Um.
Yep.
Those are the reasons why I could recommend this location.
And moving the garage forward, you're deranging the same issue because the tree, the redwood trees run all along that fence all the way up to the, uh, property line, don't they?
That's. Moved it forward, because then they're affecting more trees, number four and three.
I looked at, I went to the site and saw that too. Alright, uh, and I talked to the contractor. Alright, any questions of staff?
None for me.
Alright, good, then I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing, and go ahead and listen, and hear something from the applicant or the applicant's representative. Alright. Hold on, it's, it's, it's important that we get you on, you know. We need to talk to your agent first, but now we'll put the mic on, okay, good.
Hello?
Yeah, there you go.
I'm Natalie Cowan and I'm the owner of the property.
Good, it's a nice property.
Thank you, thanks for coming to see it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't have any question.
Alright, alright, good.
Did he come dressed up in costume, or was, did he just show up on a normal?
I, she wasn't there, I don't think, but I just, I just came normal. The contractor will attest to that.
Alright.
Yeah, I don't like to scare the neighborhoods.
I think, uh.
I drove the Jaguar too, I didn't drive a minivan, I don't, I don't do my tours on, on the properties in a minivan, it's not, not good for the.
Very good.
Police calls.
Yeah.
Alright, any, any, uh, anyone else, uh, speaking on behalf of the applicant? And, alright, anyone else to speak on the item other than the applicant? Alright, boy, we gotta, we got people just interested in the, in the democracy in action in the room, alright, very good. I'll go ahead and, and, and close the public hearing and, uh, bring it back to, to the commission for discussion and action as appropriate.
I'm happy to make a motion, I, 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 I'm all for it, so i- if, if you want, I'll make a motion, uh, subject to everybody else.
Yeah, a- any other questions on anybody else?
Uh, for me, thank you.
Alright, good, yeah, it's straightforward, you, I mean, you go on the site, it's so clear. And the thing I feel bad about is the fact that the, uh, the pil- the pilings and everything are already built in the thing, so they have to remove all the ru- the, the rebar and move everything over, like, it's, and, and they took their measurement off the edge of the building, not the edge of the, uh, stairwell from the, to the basement, so that was the, that was the thing that caused the change. And that's for fire code, that, the, the reason for the, the distance, uh, so that they can get the fire, can get in the back.
Yes.
Alright, with that, we, Randy, you ready for a motion?
I'm, 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 I'm raving up here, I'm ready to go. Move with the planning commission, find the exception to the tree protection zone TPZ for one twenty-four inch heritage redwood tree, tree number three, to six point two times, and one twenty-four inch heritage redwood tree, tree number four, to eight point two times the tree's diameter to allow for the construction of a new detached garage at eighty-four Stockbridge Avenue. This project would not be contrary to the purpose and intent of the general plan for the reasons outlined in the staff report, and that the commission approved the TPZ exception, subject to the conditions as listed in the draft TPZ exception certificate.
Alright, very good. Alright, uh, is there a second?
I'll second, Nancy.
Nancy seconds, alright, roll call, please.
Chair Lynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Lerner?
Yes.
Commissioner Naransik?
Yes.
Commissioner Konsi? It's not here. Commissioner Lam?
Yes.
The motion passes, thank you.
Alright, thank you, and thank you Sally for the work on it too, on both of the, on both of the items, I appreciate that. Thank you staff. Thank you, staff, for being so thorough. All right, with that, then uh thank you. That's the that's the end of the uh of the items, other than the going to the staff report. So we have a staff report. And that includes a discussion about when we're going to have our next meeting, correct?
Right, I wanted to ask of the commissioners if this because of the conflict of December seventh, is everybody available for a December fourteenth meeting at six P M? Because on the December seventh, we have several alternative commissions. And we need Sally's uh attendance in two of our items that are coming up on the the forthcoming um agenda. So if we could vote on your availability and get a date certain, then item four C would be moved to that date certain.
All right. I can do the fourteenth and uh Randy and Perry, Nancy?
I think so. I'll make it so.
All right.
As long as Eric shows up to Santa Claus, I'm good.
Yeah, you guys are gonna have to come live to get your get a get a little something.
Is there some message as to why you're always the only one there? I just.
I live close.
I don't know. It's you look pretty com- I you look pretty comfortable. You should run for council.
Uh, well, you know, um, uh, I I decided that uh I need, this was enough excitement for me right now. All right, um.
I'm I I don't know that far ahead on the fourteenth, but let's run with it.
Okay, uh, Commissioner, Commissioner Narensey, are you available?
Yes, thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Conse is not here. We can email her.
Right.
But at this point, four of you are available.
We do, we we don't need to make a motion on this. We just post it, right?
You can, we need to vote on it and.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, good. So uh I'll I'll move that we uh move the meeting to the seventh of the fourteenth. Is there a second?
Second. Yep.
All right, Randy, second. All right, roll call, please.
Commissioner, uh, Chair Lynn.
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Lerner.
Yes.
Commissioner Narensey.
Yes.
Commissioner Conse is absent. Commissioner Lam.
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes.
Very good. I I I'm gonna put that on my calendar right now, or else I'll forget it. All right, uh, um, the uh the next, the anything else on the staff report?
That's it for now. We have four items, uh, sorry, two items for certain, which is the one that we continue today and another special structures commit uh permit that might come up. And possibly two T P Z exceptions that we still are working at the staff level. But we might have four items that are lining up for that meeting.
All right. All right. Very good. Anything else?
That's it from the staff.
All right, super. All right, then then next 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 items, commissioner reports. I don't have anything at this point. Anyone else have anything that's uh come up?
Yeah. I actually have a question on on staff and I know we don't um we don't work it this way, but given that that item seed was was postponed till the fourteenth of December, what other, how many other projects are out there right now? Because I I do I'm I'm I I like to walk and so I see a bunch of projects. We live on Almond Drawl and I see a bunch in the area that are seem to never end. What, how is staff handling that now? I know there's been a changeover in the planning department and I don't know about the building department, who who does it, but i- it seems to me like there's a bunch of projects that never seem to finish. So I don't know if this is the right forum for that, but we are every, it seems like every three or four months we talk about it. Is that something that you're having a ongoing issue on or what? How is that going?
Good question.
Is that a question about the projects that are under construction?
It's it's about the timeline on the pro- on all the projects projects are going right now. How many are going over and how many are close to going over?
In terms of construction?
In terms of
Yeah.
Anything on anything other than being signed off?
Yeah, that's something we can um get information from from the um chief building official.
Right, yeah, he's gonna be here next time, so that'll be a good follow-up uh for in addition while he's while he's here with us, Randy. Because I was wondering that myself, because I've been I've been doing the same thing, uh, r- driving around and uh seeing all kinds of things just going on and on and on. Um, and the other thing, the other thing about that is the as you saw on the item that we continued, um, you know, it getting getting ahead of the issue with, you know, people and people got a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar penalty. You know, they, that's a wake-up call. So we gotta figure, we gotta figure out how to make sure people are aware of the of the impact of stretching out not only on the neighbors but on themselves.
Hmm. And and we can put that in the agenda for um next month as part of the staff reports.
All right, good. And 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 the billing uh.
He's gonna be in attendance for uh item four C because he's aware of the history. And uh he's the one that manages construction timeline.
So let's make sure that he's available to discuss that.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, cool. Good, I good, good catch, Randy.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah, yeah, Charlie, I I just have one administrative matter. Uh, since we've had a change, first of all, thank you very much, Rada, for leading the session and the session today. Great job. Uh, I wanna make sure that uh I'm getting uh calendar invites.
Yeah.
Um, with the correct stuff. So mine, at least today, uh, was linking to last month's or August's um uh package. So just in case I missed it, is everyone else getting um their?
Yeah, well, there's two things that are impacting that, I think, very a good catch, because I I don't use that method, but I'm I'm glad that you do. Uh, because it they pointed out, there's been a switch over in the uh in the overall system that we're using for the planning miss. As you saw, it's actually much harder to get your packet online now than it was before. Um, it's easier to upload, I think, for uh for Anthony, but much more difficult to see a stream of all the information. You can't just scroll through it anymore. And and so I'm gonna talk to Anthony about how to make it. It's not user friendly and we can, we can get around it, but the town council had a had a training session on how to use it. If 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 it if an if a if an app requires a training session to use, it can't be a public use thing. Because people can't, people need to have access to the to the data, right? So let's uh let's 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 figure out.
It I I think it also would be that uh the rollover of the teams are still still had the older Zoom links also.
Yeah.
Maybe that was the reason uh Commissioner Narensey that your packet kept going back to the older packets. But we resolved that now, but I will send you, I think Anthony sends all of the commissioners the packet link with the Zoom link. And he said he would talk to you all and give you an update as to what's happening on his end. And this is a town-wide update for this new uh uh agenda management system for all all commissions and all public hearings. So it's easy for them to archive and chronologically go
Right.
to managing it and he will reach all of you and he will view an update.
Yes, it's important. I understand why it's important for for Anthony to have a system that works eh well for him, but it's important. It's even more important that it's one that the the public can use effectively. And right now, I I would question that. So just let him know that I'm I'm thinking that so if 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 a person in the community comes onto that website, he can't figure it out, it's not a good system. Right, so so and or if it's not configured properly, I'm I'm sure it's a very competent system that's uh can be configured properly. But it's got to be configured so people can use it.
Yeah, okay.
All right. A- any other commissioner items? That was that was good. That's all good stuff. All right, then uh we have that item. And by the way, on the on the agenda, uh, I'm looking for uh every item on the agenda to have a uh had a item number. They these don't have item, this this agenda does not have item number on it. It has, so a uh items, item staff report should be item five.
Okay.
If commission report should be item six.
Yeah.
Adjourn should be item seven, so that we uh I can call it out to somebody so they can so they can actually know what item number we're on. And then the subbullets are are already there, but just make sure that those those get put in. So item seven, so adjourn.
I move.
Boy, that was tough, Randy. I I always rely on you.
I think my my, I think my uh my streak is for seven years as a live, Eric. That's not true. Perry Perry got me like two meetings ago. I was like, boom.
I didn't know. I'm sorry. I didn't know.
No, 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 no. Please, please, we should race to that. You, Eric, I'm not sure if you're actually getting better, but this is forty-four minutes and it was really, you didn't start till five after. So thirty-nine minutes is way, I mean, you were hitting way over your uh, you know.
I I know, I know. I I was I was I I thought this was a twenty-minute meeting. So, all right, so I I just love seeing you guys so much. That's what it is.
And that but it's not in person. I heard we weren't invited there and that you were the only one that was supposed to be in in chamber. Where's the meat cleaver, by the way? Where is?
I was here to entertain guests. All right, we have a roll call, please, on the adjournment. This is the top vote.
Uh, who's I, we didn't have a second to.
Okay, I'll second.
Thank you. Um, Chair Lynn.
Oh, definitely.
Uh, Commissioner Lerner.
Who up?
Commissioner Lerner.
Yes.
Commissioner Narensey.
Yes.
Commissioner Conse. Oh, she's here.
She's back?
She's muted.
Obviously muted.
Yeah.
But she's muted.
Yeah.
All right.
Commissioner Conse.
All right.
Don't wait.
Don't wait.
Okay, Commissioner Lam.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you all.
Happy Halloween. We'll see you on December fourteenth.
I hope to see you live. You guys, you're all live. It'd be a good way to see you.
Can you just invite us to be join you there? You just look like you're really enjoying that without us uh there.
I I really miss you all, so come on. All right.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right, bye, everybody.
Bye.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
All right. Thank you for coming. All right.